It's seven o'clock, we will call the regular village board meeting to order. Everyone rise and say the pledge please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The clerk, please call the roll.
Maravka, here. March, here. Jessica Jones, here. Bowden, here. Cam, here.
Here.
Approval or corrections to the minutes of the October 14th, 2019 regular village board meeting? Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, a motion to accept as presented.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee March, second by trustee Parker.
March?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Cam?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
Jones?
Present.
Accounts payable and payroll, payroll pay period ending 10/19/19 in the amount of $54,808.75. Accounts payable, general fund, $77,156.02. Are there any questions on any of the bills on payroll? If not, a motion to pay the bills and the payroll.
Motion.
Second. Motion by trustee Parker, second by trustee Cam.
Parker?
Yes.
Cam?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
March?
Yes. Public comment and/or questions on any non-agenda item. Reports of committees, village administrators report.
I just wanted to point out that we did meet with Senator Sims on October 17th. He was just kind of making his rounds within his district. He did, we did mention that the Desiervilleton-Piaton Road interchange was a high priority for us as far as traffic that's going to be generated by the new development that's occurring there, in addition of the traffic that's already there with east-west freight movements. He did say that he was going to have the Secretary of Transportation in the district by the beginning, first week of November, and that he would have the Secretary of Transportation on the tour and visit Piaton. And so to get that kind of attention from the Secretary of Transportation here will be very good for us. So we'll have a spotlight there and try to get that interchange improvement added to I Doc's plan for improvements. So I think that'll be good. We might even get him into the building here and have this be the beginning of the tour is our hope. And we'll take him on a tour and emphasize that at that corner.
Try to take him up into the interchange about four in the afternoon.
Yeah. I will try. But if I don't, I'll emphasize that this is Sunday. Hopefully we'll get him back here.
I think just getting him here is a good step.
Yeah, we need to get this area on his radar. So I just want you to know that that's the kind of things that we're doing. So just wanted to point that out.
Okay. No police chiefs report tonight, engineers report.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Treasury report is in your packet. Are there any questions or discussion on the treasurer's report? No old business, move on to new business. Item A, presentation of the 2019-2020 audit. Oh, sorry. Sorry, Marcy. Public Works.
You really want me to talk?
Yeah, sure. You're not on my list, I forgot about you already.
Ah, just a couple of things. Leaf collections in full swing. Branch pickup ended today. The sweeper's here. Anybody else who's doubting about? Yeah. Just a couple of things on that. It's a 2020, and it's the first one off the assembly line. So we have number one. So it's kind of cool. So on the new Public Works building, it's about 85% complete, the office. We ran into some snags here and there with the building, with Will County along the way. Some of these items I'd like to bring to committee to discuss. We were supposed to get NICOR service. Me and Amy were in contact with Judy from NICOR. Well, they have to do an environmental study to give us gas. So I thought that was kind of shocking, but that's all I had.
I had a question on that building. Sometimes I go by there and the gate is open.
Yes.
And sometimes it's locked.
Contractors come in and out while they're working. They do work weekends too. But I have, anyway, so we're just closed as we speak. Thank you.
What's the plan for the drainage in front? It's always holding water.
That is going to be a final grade, so what we have to do is bring that to grade, get it to ditch. It's always been low, so that's part of it.
Right, it's always been low.
Yeah.
So sidewalk elevation and bringing it?
Yep, bring it up.
Okay.
Because the sidewalk's that grade, so we just got to get it to.
If the gas line does get to go through, will the houses out there be able to link to it?
I believe so, Amy.
Yes, that's NICOR's plan. We were hoping to get recapture on that, but NICOR has been out there and talking to them directly and going to hook them up. But that's okay. Whatever they need to do. So there's a landscape plan that we'll need to finish up. But the interior, I think is what Bob was referring to, is 85% complete. And then there's some additional work that we would need to complete with some installation, the shop part. So we wouldn't anticipate moving until it's bidley and so on.
The landscaping plan, does that have to be approved by a county?
Yes.
Actually, they make the plan, really, yeah.
Every code and ordinance, everything has to adhere to county standards. Because it's unincorporated.
Not been easy.
It's been. Every built in town, we would be in authority on most of that stuff.
Anything incorporated with car codes, but.
So Amy, do you want to get an email out to the matters of the Public Works Committee?
Yes.
They'll be in some next couple of weeks, so instead of moving.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to item A, presentation of the 2019-2020 audit.
All right, thank you. I'm Marcy Colberg. I think a few of your faces are new from past. So what I'm going to do is try to take five to 10 minutes and go through this 50-page document. I'd like just the things that I believe that you need to know and let you guys read the rest of it. So if you do have the glue binder with you, you can follow along. Otherwise, you can look at it later. This year, we've been having a little bit of a difference on your report on pages one, two, and three. In the past, you've been getting what is called an unqualified, unmodified report. This year, you will notice if you look on page two, there is a summary of opinions. And the opinions are each one of the groups that we have to issue an opinion on. And we did qualify this year on the governmental activities, which is going to be on the first couple of pages. It's exhibit A and B. We qualified because there's a new standard in place this year related to other post-employment benefit plans. And you guys have another post-benefit, post-employment benefit plan by virtue of being an IMRF. It requires you to allow retirees, surviving spouses, disabled people, disabled employees to stay in your health plan until Medicare age. You can require them to pay for their premium, but it is considered a post-employment benefit plan. And you would have to have an actuary do a study to determine all of the assets and liabilities related to that plan. It'd be a couple thousand dollars a year from what we've been dealing with with other villages and school districts and that. And the village has said, you know, we're not going to do that. We're not going to present those numbers. So the governmental activities is qualified. We've done that on a number of the villages and school districts that we deal with, so it's not anything unexpected. And then there is a footnote in note eight that explains the plan. So just wanted to point out that it is a little bit different. You've had that footnote in your financials in the past. However, this year with the new standards, since we're not, you're not quantifying those numbers, that liability and any offsetting assets and that, there is this qualification. So just wanted to let you know that. If you go to page four, it is the overall financial position of the village on a full accrual basis. We pick up all payables, all receivables that are material. We're not going to pick up small amounts, but we do pick up receivables and payables. And it does show that you had $13.7 million of net position, which means your assets exceeded your liabilities for the year in the governmental activities. That's the first column. And then in your business-type activities, you had $861,000 of net position. You'll remember and you'll see later, the business-type activities is the water sewer and garbage funds put together as a utility fund. And obviously, your water sewer was sold last summer. So that those revenues and expenses are going to decrease over the prior year. Just a couple of things to let you know there is that your police pension net liability did increase about $182,000 for the year. The IMRF net pension liability increased about $404,000 for the year. Those numbers are calculated by an actuary. IMRF hires one, the police pension hires one for the village. So those numbers do come from an actuary, and those liabilities did increase for the year. Just wanted to point that out. On page five is exhibit B. This is your overall income and expenses of the village, again on a full accrual basis. Your governmental activities, which is at the top there, it's a little bit funny if you haven't seen this before. The expenses are listed on the left, and then it offsets any, what we could say are program revenues, charges, fees, fines, grants, that type of thing, to come up with a net expense. And then at the bottom are all of your taxes and various items like that. But your governmental activity expenses total $3.7 million for the year. It was an increase of about $344,000 over last year. $183 of that was an increase in public safety. $163,000 was an increase in public works. Administration, the general government line there actually decreased about $31,000 over last year. If you go to the next page, these are numbers that you're more used to seeing month to month. It's your funds, your general fund, your capital improvement, your motor fuel tax. Couple of things to point out there is, you will see at the very bottom of the page, your general fund has almost $14 million in it. That is due primarily, as you know, to a 12, about $12.7 million transfer from the water sewer funds that you moved into there at the sale, after the sale of the water sewer system. Without that transfer in, you would have had, let me see here. Oh, I'm on the wrong page. If you go to page six, or page eight with me, the transfer in shows there, you would have had revenues were greater than last year by $462,000. Your expenses exceeded last year by $477,000. So without that transfer, you can see you had a 430, left-hand column, most of the way down, $435,909 loss prior to the transfer coming in. So before that transfer, you had a loss. With the transfer, you ended up with the large fund balance there. If you flip.
Was most of that for the purchase of a Public Works building, Marcy?
No.
What was it from? So what, so like for public safety, 1.5 million, what is all that?
You can see detail of that, I'm not going to go through it, but there is detail in the very back. If you flip back to pages 41, and you can go through that. The 42 has got the public safety amounts in there, and you can see actual compared budget.
So where would the purchase of that Public Works building? Where does that come from?
That's in this fiscal year, we did it in April. It's in this fiscal year. We did that in April.
After this fiscal year. But you can see, and in the back, starting on pages 40, and I'm sorry, 41 on through, there is detail of the various amounts there compared to budget. If you want to see line by line what is going on with some of those funds. Okay? After that, on page 10, is your water sewer garbage fund and the money that was left in there. We are, we do have a recommendation, which was one of the letters we passed out, was the garbage refuse fund is now closed. You're not billing any longer. Water and sewer is closed, so we would recommend that you would talk with the attorney and get a resolution done to formally close those funds and move whatever money is into the general fund or wherever else you determine that those funds should go. You can move them into whatever remaining funds you would like. So that is, as I said, you had, if you go to the next page, page 11, you will see the operating revenues of that fund and the operating expenses. It did show that you had $181,000 operating income, and then you had depreciation on the asset. So you ended up with an operating expense of $47,000. You did bring in $12 million, but on the basis of full accrual, you're showing a $7 million gain, because we have to remove the assets that you sold. So those were, the remaining balance of that was about $5 million that had not been depreciated. So once we remove those, your gain was $7 million. And then you did transfer out the 12, not quite 12.7 million dollars there. So just to go through that. And then police pension is on page 13. Shows your total assets. And just wanted to let you know that went up by about $101,000 over last year. Page 14 shows the activity in that fund, the contributions from the employers, from the village, and then all of the benefits paid, et cetera. So you can see that. As I said, we will have two letters from us, a recommendation letter, and then there is a letter letting you know, just information for you as governance that you need to know. The AFR, the annual financial report with the state of Illinois, is ready to be filed. We had to wait for the audit to be done, and we attached that. So that will be going out, and you will get confirmation, Marcy, of that this week. Want to thank everybody for helping, all the assistance that we get while we're out here. It's a nice place for us to work. My beginning staff, people really love coming out here when they hear that they've been assigned out here, because it's one of our clean ones, and we can go through, and they can follow along and get things done. And we've been, I mean, our people have been here three or four years, but I was telling Marcy, we lost one of our newer ones. So what's out here, he won't be here next year, so. Any questions? I know it's very quick. I don't want to take a lot of time, but we, anytime you have questions, our phone number is in the book. You can call, you can ask Marcy, Amy can get in touch with us, whoever. We can get to with you if you have questions. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. So we, a motion to accept the audit, please.
So move.
Okay. So a motion to accept the 2018-2019 audit. Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee March, second by trustee Jones.
March?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Cam?
Yes.
And Parker?
Yes.
Item B, presentation of the actuarial report by the pension board. Dave Rack, president of the pension board.
You should have the report and the required presentation to meet the statute for a couple of highlights, the lowlights, how we want to look at it. The current according to actuary analysis, funded liabilities about $5.1 million. Depending on where you look at this, and different analysis, you'll see that higher and lower, but $5.1 million is the number in the report. The statute requirement contribution from the village for this year would be $440,422. Keep in mind, that is on the state statute calculation. It is a, has a long-term ramp on it that will continue to increase. The actuary provided his recommendation using the more accepted standards of $573,823. Illinois Department of Insurance, report from 2013 to 2018, the village contribution was $804,000 under their recommendations. There is a misnomer in the report. The actuary showed the return at 0.45%. He didn't, his formula was based upon 10 years of analysis. The, there was only five years' worth of data, and it was 1.44%. So when you read the report, he has some concerns about the return. The current return is still very low, but based upon the investment options of a fund under $2.5 million. That's, I'll get to some numbers later on that. There's a rate shock that they do in there. At the 4.5% return liability of the $5 million, a 1% lower rate of return increases liability by $1 million to $6.2 million. And a 1%, it's a pretty linear, a 1% lower is a $4.3 million liability. And so our return at 1.5 is, you can basically add $3 million more to the liability on our current return. When you, Department of Insurance, something that Ms. Ingalls had pulled together was some of the adjacent communities from 2012 to 2018. Moni's return on their fund was 0.91%. Coal City was 2.12, Piaton at 2.16, Kankakee at 4.89, University Park at 4.99, and Creed at 5.1. And the big reason behind that is portfolio mix. Those that were under 2% had under $2.5 million to invest. Those over, in the 5% range, were over 2.5%. So, or 2.5 million. So they had the ability to invest beyond a 10% fixed investment portfolio.
So we talked about the pension at our last AOC meeting. A couple of things came up. First of all, we're all, I think, in favor of somehow trying to make up the deficit that we've been neglectful in the last few years. I think the number was around $800,000. And also trying to, you know, come up with some way to fully fund what the actuary would like us to do. And that would help to get us to the, over the $2.5 million mark so that we can, like I said, have a better portfolio mix. But we wanted to see what happens with the veto session. There's some talk of combining all the police pension funds in the state. And we just kind of want to see how that shakes out before we allocate any money. And we thought we'd just, you know, wait. It sounds like they're going to try to push this through before the end of November, and we'll see what happens. But one way or the other, we've got, we've got to, like I said, try to make up that deficit that has been building over the last five years, and also, you know, try and come up with some way to, you know, fully fund this police fund. We're hoping, I don't know if we're hoping, but we're trying to see if, if they do combine all the pension funds, the thought is that they're going to treat it just like the IMRF, that we're just going to get a bill that, you know, says this is how much you have to put in, and there's no, you know, you know, we have to do it. The thought is that possibly that they will allow us to raise taxes above the cap amount to do that. The lobby amount to do that. If they don't, we'll, you know, got to talk about cutting a lot, cutting out a lot of services that we provide. You know, no street program, no sidewalk program, you know, cuts across the board to be able to do that. So the consensus of the AOC committee was, you know, to, we really don't want to put, you know, $5 million from the sale of the water sewer fund into this. We want to try to keep as much as that working for us, earning money. But on the other hand, we want to try to make up the past deficits and funds so that we're at a better footing. So that's kind of where we're at.
And we're going to continue to look at that as we get into the next budget year.
Yeah, I mean, I would hope that by the end of the year, we'll know what the state is doing with the consolidation, and that, you know, we'll have to make some serious decisions on which way we're going to go. But I think it'd be premature to act right now until we find out exactly what the playing field's going to be after the legislature. If they act, or if they don't act, then we'll know where we're at next year. I said, hopefully by the end of the year before the budget, you know, needs to be put together, so.
Any of the trustees have any questions for Mr. Rack? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, item C, Mr. Hudson and Mr. Malteese planning and zoning commission to address the board regarding the shed ordinance on the agenda a little bit down the road here.
There was an answer up in the air.
Oh, it's got the shed.
I think it was on purpose.
We'll pretend he's standing next to you.
So one of the questions, we had a meeting recently, and we kind of came up with a consensus of what we thought the sheds should be, materials, things like that. I then got kicked back here, and from what I understand, they made some changes to it. Now, I have, I've got some issues with the sizes of the sheds. I mean, they have a max of 350, but with a 2%. Now, if you have a lot that's 14,000 square foot that gives you 250, why do we need the 350 square feet?
I'm going to, I'm going to stick that, I'll let the building committee answer that, because that's where this.
There's lots bigger than that.
Pardon me?
There's lots that are bigger than 14,000.
But the problem with that is, I mean, you're looking at a very large shed. I mean, when you're, you're 350 square feet, that's essentially building a whole nother garage in somebody's lot. And should we do that? And even at 250 square feet, for a 2% for a sale of 14,000 square foot, that's a big building. That's a 12 by 20 in somebody's backyard. So if you're going to build that big, what kind of restrictions are we going to have? Or what, what are we going to require that it be built out of? You know, there hasn't been any talk on that.
Well, it started from modeling the mantino.
Well, I think we should mine our own, not just mantinos. I mean, when you go through them, you look at the size. If you have somebody's backyard, you have to realize how the neighbors are going to be looking at a huge building, you know, in their backyards. Everybody puts up the big building like that. That's, that encompasses a lot of area of their backyard.
I don't think everyone can put up a big building like that, because their square footage won't allow for it.
But shouldn't it be, shouldn't we bring that on the pervious area? And not the impervious area?
Impervious.
I mean, when you're, when you're covering that amount of land, shouldn't you, if you have a house that's large on a smaller lot, and your lot is still very large, and you're allowing 2%, you're going to be covering almost the whole backyard of the building. So you have an impervious surface then, you eliminated that.
That was a concern that was brought up in something, you know, mantino models. They have, I believe, a 60% max coverage, hard surface driveway.
So is that being brought into this?
We discussed it, and we've determined it's probably difficult to measure fairly.
So then if you do go to a building that's 350 square feet, which is essentially another garage, what are you requiring for footings and things like that? So then if you do go to a building that's three hundred and fifty square feet, which is essentially another garage, what are you requiring for footings and things like that? And what type of building are you going to be allowing, what type of building are you planning allowing? Are they going to be able to put a metal building in your backyard, a metal shed? That's, that's basically.
Do you want to answer that, Tom?
Excuse me. In most instances, in the new subdivisions, anyway, that's covered by the covenants. Our, the three hundred and fifty square foot, just to be clear, the reason that's really thrown in there is so that we have no arguments of what's a shed and what's a garage. So we've put the three hundred and fifty square foot in there. So if you hit three hundred and fifty, it's now a garage and our ordinance only permits one garage. Concerning the size, if you were closed in your garage and made it a room, you could build a seven hundred and fifty square foot garage as a detached structure. So the building committee didn't really feel that, you know, given, again, the sizes of the new subdivision. I grabbed one out of the back. This is, now in our new regulations, we require them to put these square footages of the lots right on the flats. This is unit two in Westgate. And there are only two lots in the entire area that are over ten thousand square foot. So in most cases, you're, you know, you're going to be at two hundred square feet or less. And given the thought of the building committee was the larger the lot, everything is in proportion. If you see a barn next to a farmhouse, you already see, whoa, that's massive because it's on a large area. Again, that was the theory of the building committee in looking at it. And that's the reason they gave us the direction to go by the two percent. And I'm the one that was concerned about the lot coverage. To go out and try and figure, you know, the size of their driveway, the size of their patio, I mean, it gets extremely difficult to issue a building permit. And we're trying to maintain the conditions of the town without being so cumbersome that our residents can't do anything with their land.
But then if you have, under, that being said, if you have a lot that's ten thousand square foot that's going to allow you to put up a shed, that's two hundred square feet. That's a ten by twenty building. Ten by twenty, that's a pretty big lot of dairy farm. And that's on a small lot of ten thousand square foot with a house there. So I feel like that's way, way too large. And then with that, what, what type of material are you going to allow them to build? What kind of foundation, what kind of post? I mean, what are we allowing to build a shed with or what do we want?
What you want is the question. The building code does not require a foundation until you hit six hundred square feet. Even a two-car detached garage can have a floating slab with a twelve by twelve thickened edge as long as it doesn't exceed six hundred square feet. Most sheds nowadays, they're, especially the pre-manufactured ones, they come in on four by sixes. They do a gravel base and they just come in with a forked, just some on top of that gravel base. They're not going anywhere. It's not like twenty years ago with the little aluminum sheds that you'd see tumbling down the neighborhood as the winds blow.
But there's nothing saying that they can't have them.
Correct. Except for the covenants.
So essentially, somebody can put a ten by twenty building in their backyard and just put a whole building with no floor or anything.
They have to have a floor.
Okay, so still you can put a whole building of ten by twenty, that ten thousand square foot lot, which I think is really, makes any more impact.
I agree. On the other hand, if people like to accumulate stuff and I would rather see their boat and their, you know, their old car, I'd rather see that inside a garage or a shed rather than sitting in the backyard.
I think the thought process was, like the lawnmower, the snow blower, all of that would be in the shed where you could utilize your garage or your car.
But then you have to realize too, if somebody is accumulating that much stuff, just because they put up a shed doesn't mean that stuff's going to go in the shed. That's just going to give them an area to accumulate more stuff. So now they have a big shed and stuff piled around it. There's no guarantee. That's why they have all these storage units all over because people go there and put their, your belts, your cars, everything else. And, you know, with a modest shed in your backyard so that you have some land and, you know, the whole, I think they have to look at the, the whole entire of the, of the subdivision.
So just to reiterate the, the current ordinance prior, prior to this discussion, what was the size of?
Hundred and twenty square feet.
Ten by twelve, which is, you know, rather restrictive, given not every lot is the same size.
But then, that's, a ten by ten is a hundred. I mean, ten by ten is a decent sized room, a ten by twelve, you know, you increase that there. But, I mean, a ten by twenty, which is maybe on average for a ten thousand square foot house, that's a big building in somebody's backyard.
I, I don't think people are going to put a ten by twenty building in.
Well, they'll do it if they're, if they're allowed. I mean, we have to make the ordinance for it just because you think you're going to put something in motion like that and, I mean, they ask us if they're not going to do it? No, that's a good, good plan.
I will say that in all the towns that I work in, Piutown is the only one that has a size restriction on the sheds. And I very seldom ever have a large shed built. I think it was the, I'm sorry, I think it was the intent of the building committee that if you have a large lot, you'd be able to build a larger shed that's in proportion to the rest of your property. But the building committee can speak to that.
I think a ten by twenty building in your backyard in proportion with the house that you have in a ten thousand square foot lot, I don't think so.
Most people aren't going to have like a huge house and a tiny little yard and then think they're going to put this huge shed on this. It could, yes, but maybe they don't want a lot of yard to grow. So they might, that's kind of ridiculous, I know, but there are people out there that don't want a lot of yard, they just want a huge house. So, I mean, it's, it's their land that they bought.
I mean, the biggest house you can put, if you put this right in front of us, is thirty percent of lot coverage. And it, and then you can only put a, this.
It's two percent.
Two, but I'm saying a house can be thirty percent of your lot. That's the all, that's the biggest house you could put on a lot. And so if you got a ten thousand square foot lot, so what is that? It's a three thousand square foot house and then a two thousand square foot shed. I mean, I, two hundred square, yeah. I just don't think that's. Yeah, we don't really limit pool sizes on how many square feet they take up in a lot size. So why would we regulate a shed?
Because when you start building a building and it becomes and it starts growing up, you know, vertically, it's a lot different.
A five-foot pool or four and a half foot pool.
Well, they can't look at the whole, you have to look at the whole neighborhood. You look at the neighborhood and your whole clear lot and it's all open and with trees and things like that. Then you start putting a building that's, you know, fifteen foot tall, that's twenty by thirty, and you have three or four people put in, what's, I just don't think it's a great idea.
Well, appreciate your thoughts and your comments and the board can take that into consideration as we go forward.
Thanks, Steve.
Item D, number one, an ordinance amending title fifteen, land usage chapter one fifty-seven, point zero one five of the Building and Piutown Code of Ordinances, Sheds.
So therein contains some discussion about the base, which, which is, is in the accessory buildings right under section three. I just wanted to point out that it talks about the base structure, talks about the encraving the structure. Just, just to point that out since it's just part of that reading discussion, does not talk about any design guidelines. As Commissioner Maltese just did point out, we did, did not get in. They did discuss that, planning and doing, that did not get, that did not get into ordinance.
Did the building committee talk anything about?
We did, we talked about requiring cement on anything greater than that one hundred and twenty square foot. You know, but Tom had mentioned four. I mean, anything pre-built comes really pre-engineered, really, with a big term timber foundation.
The, the building committee did have higher recommendations. Plan, the planning and zoning commission during their discussion did recognize lower, lower heights on those structures. And so those lower heights are in this ordinance based on the last discussion that we had of this, this body. So the heights for estate residential is fifteen feet maximum height. All other residential zoning districts, twelve feet and non-residential districts, twelve feet with a two percent per total lot square footage. And then three fifty square feet maximum in all of those empty districts is what is in this ordinance.
I have a question for Tom. If you build a, a building, a shed with a nine-foot ceiling with a maximum height of twelve feet, what kind of pitch do you have on that roof?
Probably about a three twelve.
Four twelve.
Four twelve. I mean, most houses nowadays are a minimum of six twelve. So you can have six twelve pitch on the house and three or four on the. But generally, they're not going, you know, the only time you're going to have a nine-foot ceiling is if you're in a garage. I don't see too many nine-foot ceilings on sheds.
I looked at some pre-built trusses at Menards. So a standard twelve-foot wide truss is a hundred and thirty-nine inches, which is eleven foot, six inches tall. So that's just under the limit. And then the gambrel style, which is kind of like the barn style, is right at a hundred and forty-four inches pre-built. I mean, twelve is kind of restrictive, fifteen is probably way more than necessary. But I hate to see someone cut on the foundation thickness or something just to be under the twelve feet. Because the pre-built industry is, is at twelve foot tall.
I, I prefer a stick-built as opposed to.
Well, these are, these are two by fours.
Right, and then with, with the building mounted to the concrete, because that becomes a haven for vermin and animals and rodents underneath there.
Right.
I mean, it's, you know.
But a twelve-foot wide haven is no different than a ten-foot wide haven that exists today, in my opinion.
As far as?
There's already, no foundations in the sheds that are up there today.
Right, you know, spread a little bit of gravel down and bring this thing in and drop it down and you start talking about some of these sizes. I mean, it's a recipe for a sheep shed disaster. I mean, it's just a, you know, if you pour a footing and have concrete and it's mounted to the concrete, you've got nothing for these things to go into, go underneath. You're going to spend some more money than if you buy a seven hundred dollar building and bring it in and drop it, which is going to have something.
I, I wasn't opposed to the cement foundation.
And not having enough pitch on a bigger building, that's going to look terrible too, right?
Excuse me, you can always look, you don't need a nine-foot or an eight-foot side wall on a shed. If you put a seven-foot side wall, then you're going to be able to get a six twelve pitch in it and have plenty of room and headroom to get in there. I mean, it doesn't have to be eight feet, you know, it could be seven feet on the outside walls. And they certainly make those and they will give you more of a pitch.
These are just standard ones that are off the shelf at Menards that are already twelve foot tall. That's the only point I was making.
Because I think, I mean, the whole thing to me is the, what's the final appearance going to be?
Right.
And, you know, if a guy's got a three hundred thousand dollar house and he's looking at a chicken coop type building with flop down some gravel and raccoons and anything else running underneath it.
Yeah, I don't think.
Low pitch roof and, you know.
I mean, we're talking about people that made a huge investment of two lots, you know, so they're already twenty thousand square feet. I doubt they're going to go cheap on a shed.
I doubt it, but just to prevent it from happening, you know. Do we have a big problem with accessory sheds?
So the exact wording is accessory buildings must have been approved for concrete, wood, or other similar surface. All accessory buildings shall be built with a minimum four-inch gravel base or manufactured floor kit of a moisture-resistant nature and be built to avoid rodent or vermin infestation.
I mean, I'm not opposed to have, you know, say the concrete floor, but, you know, the rest of it seems pretty reasonable to me.
I think our intent, what we were talking about is just to make it more like a shed and not like a garage in the backyard. That's what we want to do. We're trying to get the height restriction at twelve foot, meaning that you can put the side walls at seven. It'd be a big shed in the backyard, but still looks like a shed, not like another house in the backyard.
Right, and, and we are at the twelve foot in this ordinance.
And I'm just explaining our intent.
Are there, is there any other discussion?
I will say that the cost of a concrete floor and the installation of the concrete floor, you're probably getting the cost of the shed doubled.
The shed already comes with a floor that's made for that, concrete's kind of. Yeah, that's where I was looking for it and, thank you.
Bob, go ahead, step up.
Step up?
Yeah, so everybody can hear you, please.
So, when I bought my house, I put it in a shed, I think Shelley's seen it. I spent money, I put it on concrete for the simple fact is, ten years from now, I don't want it looking like this or this. So fifteen years from now, it should be nice and level, no rodents, so I'll, I just want to say those two things, so, spent the money, yeah.
And then what kind of roof material are we talking about on the sheds? Shingled roof to match the house or a tin roof? And the tin roofs tend to get dented and faded and after ten years, they look terrible.
I mean, we're going from zero restriction on any exterior to a hundred percent restriction on some of these conversations. Just based on, you know, another eighty foot square feet of shed space, I think there really.
And I will say as far as the deterioration, we do have a property maintenance code that would address that. Same thing with the, you know, the shingles and the tur.
I mean, today you have a plastic shed as long as it's under a hundred and twenty square feet. But you can't have a plastic shed at, even though they make them, they make a eight by thirteen shed or whatever, or eight by, I think, these are rubber-made sheds. Well, they're, they don't conform to our ordinance. So just because they're made of plastic, which is a very weather, you know, solid material, we have to reinvent how they're built? I don't think that's, you know.
I guess I looked at it, I mean, it's, you got a house and you want it to look good. And if you got a shed, just because we call it a shed doesn't mean it should be a cheaply built structure, you know, shinglet.
Well, again, I think some of that is going to fall under the covenants that Tom was speaking of.
Excuse me, can I just, the covenants are all great in subdivisions, but unless they're enforced by a association and that the association's not set up to enforce that, it's not going to happen.
Individual homeowners can enforce it.
But you can enforce it, but you have to go to a attorney to do it. So you have to go at your expense to make sure that the shed gets put up that way. It's not going to happen.
Or complain to the village and have their code enforcement officer go out.
They will not, the, the village has no jurisdiction over the covenants that are going to be in the.
No, not the covenants, I'm saying if the building becomes deteriorated.
Well, you'd have to wait for it to deteriorate after all the years efforts ago.
Any other discussion by the board?
One important thing, there's a lot of pools in the, in the village, we don't allow it for a pool house. So, you know, if you have a hundred and twenty square foot shed and you have a pool, you have no room for all that stuff. So I think it'd be very beneficial for those residents with pools that would like the. So I think it'd be very beneficial for those residents to pool, that would, like, houses are inflatable and tables during the winter, and chairs and that type of thing.
What we have before you, this would be ordinance number nineteen dash forty, and ordinance admitting title fifteen, land usage, chapter one fifty-six and seven, sections one fifty-seven point zero nine and one fifty-seven point zero one five of the Village of Peatown Code of Ordinances. Is there any desire to change any of this ordinance before there's a motion made to adopt it? Or does somebody want to make a motion to adopt the ordinance as presented to the board at this time?
I think they make a motion to go back to P and Z for more discussion.
Back to P and Z or back to building committee? Well, that's, so, I, I had asked for a different motion at this time, so.
Make the motion we passed as presented.
Because that's what's on the agenda right now, so. That motion has been made by trustee Ham, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Bowden.
Ham?
Yes.
Howton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
Jones?
No.
March?
Yes.
Motion carries five to one to adopt ordinance number nineteen dash forty. Number two, ordinance for special use in a B-one zoning to allow a business and residence on the same floor, one twelve, Corning Avenue, and approval of P and Z findings of fact.
So this case comes to you as a result of a public hearing that was held on October twenty-four. This case is requesting a special use permit in the B-one retail business zoning district to allow for operating a business and residential on the same floor. And the petitioner is here with us tonight. A roll call was held on this, and it resulted in three yes votes, one no vote, two were absent, and for a recommendation for approval with the following conditions. The address for this project is one twelve West Corning Avenue, and the conditions are as follows. Six feet parking spaces to be provided, a concrete walk to be constructed from the parking space to the building in accordance with the requirements of the code. Grass to be planted where appropriate on the lots. Landscaping plan to be presented to the planning and zoning commission for approval. And the property currently under two pins shall be unified under one pin.
I think we have.
Hi.
Hi. Can you just give your name for the record, please?
Yeah, my name is Mandy Abis.
And, so any of the trustees have any questions for the petitioner or discussion?
This is the red schoolhouse.
That is correct.
Correct.
Close streets from the church.
Yes, that's correct.
How come you're subdividing it into two studios? I didn't get that.
There's, it's a lot of space for one unit, and it's, it's high ceilings in there too. So it's, for rental units to divide in its two makes more sense. There's, there's lots of room that could be used.
So you're talking about two rental, two living units?
Yes.
How many square foot each one?
Six oh six.
And then there's going to be an office in there too?
The office is at the front part of the building. It's already there, there's already an office on one side, and there's a washroom on the other side.
What, what, with the office, what kind of business?
My personal, it's my personal office, so.
This came up a month or so ago, with the old Dr. Lowery building, moving in the property, and a business in the property in the same building. And then the comment that you made is, I don't see this becoming prolific because there's not that many places. There are more places than we think. Where does this stop? I mean, can anybody take a, uh, building and chop it up for a little quarters?
Yeah, I think with the Dr. Lowery building, I think the reason I made that comment was because, I mean, it was surrounded by residential. I mean, that's where this building also abuts residential.
That is all, isn't that all sold to B-one, Devil's Creek? I think, I think it is. Maybe not. I had that, that building converted from P Public.
She's right here. So, this is B, all B-one.
Right.
So this would only be allowable in B-one.
Which is?
She's, she can only do this with a special use permit to have residential and business on the same floor. And so, essentially, this is a business, and she is asking for a special use to have residential on the same floor, so.
Put anybody in that B-one district, which, does that light blue through the hole?
Yeah, this is all the B-one.
So any of those buildings, that could be chopped up and converted?
With a special use, they can request this with a special use. So it's essentially like.
So anybody could request in that business district?
If you read the zoning code, it would have to be inappropriate use, so, and it would have to go through P and Z, and they would review it and send you a recommendation here. So I don't think that, you know, they would all be appropriate.
Well, if you say you're going to take a building and chop it into one, two, or three residential living units and have a eight-by-ten office.
What she's requesting is to have it on one floor. All the other ones do have the same thing, but the business is downstairs and all the residential is upstairs.
I know that's the way it is now.
Right.
But it's all the same zoning, you couldn't put.
But I guess it's a case-by-case basis, is what it is.
Yeah.
And like I said, with the Dr. Lowery building, it's basically in a residential neighborhood.
It is, but it wasn't industrial neighborhood.
Correct, but where this building also is, it's that whole, well, the house next to it is a rental unit, is a residential home.
But it's, but it's only one.
Correct, correct.
All the way to the corner, that's just it. So I guess what I'm saying is, can anybody come in that B-one district and request living units on the main floor and an eight-by-ten office and call it special use?
They can request it, and it's up to the board, it's up to planning and zoning to look at the case, make a recommendation to the board, and for the board to make a final decision. So the answer to your question is yeah.
So, basically, they're going to allow living orders on the main, if you get the special use.
It, right, it depends on, it's a case-by-case basis.
It depends by line on how you make that determination on, yeah, it's good or no, it's not. You know what I'm saying?
I, I understand what you're saying.
As opposed to, yes, you can.
But I still stand by the doctor, you know, what we did with the Dr. Lowery building.
Why would you go there?
Well, what is, so what's the big, what's the big negative of having people live in the business district on that first floor? So, is it just because it's a small, you don't like the idea of small apartment, or?
Well, I think you decimate your, your business district. Well, Rantool's a perfect example. They, when the airport space was there, and they had a nice downtown whatever. And the mayor of Rantool, which Chicago's got a radio station, said, we've got all of this, these buildings, and that they're cheap. And now you go to Rantool and look at their downtown, it's a slump. And people are living on the first floor in business districts and all of that thing. It's, it doesn't lead to better than it leads to lesser.
But again, as I said, I believe it's a case-by-case basis.
I mean, so you're taking a vacant building and you're possibly getting two people that would be in the village and using the village's services and being, you know, taxpayers. So I, I mean, I don't, like, I said, I don't think we'd entertain, like, just having a house chopped up and calling it.
No, we've definitely got an ordinance against converting single-bedroom homes.
All right, but even necessarily a building in the downtown business district, I think that's something completely different. I think that's something that the board in the past has, you know, shied away from. But again, it's B-one, somebody could petition for it, you know, could ask for that special use, but that would again be up to the board.